Hello and welcome to this candidate forum for candidates for Stillwater City Council in Ward Two and Wards Three. I'm Mary Santi, a member of League of Women Voters of White Bear Lake area, and I live outside of Stillwater. I'll be your moderator. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in their government. Our mission is to support and educate voters on their rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or any political party. Our goal is to allow you, the citizens, to get to know the candidates and their positions on the issues before the election November 5th. All candidates who filed to run for this position have been invited to participate, and today we have for Ward Two Lindsey Belland and Sherid Kellerman. For Ward Three, we have Ed Nelson and Larry Oderbricht. For our format, candidates will have one minute to give an opening statements, introduce themselves, and this will be in alphabetical order by ward as they are seated. That will be followed by questions. Candidates have one minute to respond to each question, and the order of speaking will rotate. Questions were received in advance from the public on our website and reviewed by a team of LWV members. We do not use questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature, and we do consolidate questions that fall in the same topic areas. During questioning, each candidate will have three opportunities of 30 seconds to clarify information or rebut another candidate's response, and they have cards to hand me each time they use that rebuttal card. Following questions, they'll have one minute for a closing statement, and that will be in the reverse order of the opening statements. Our timekeeper will show warning signs of 30 and 15 seconds and then a stop sign. Do you want to raise your signs, and everyone can see those? And at the stop, you can complete your sentence. So, Candidate One, Lindsey Belland, would you like to begin your opening statement?
I would. Thank you so much for having me here this morning. I'm sort of in the sunlight here as I'm seeing on my screen, so I may move just a little bit closer this way to Sherid. My name is Lindsey. I am an active mother of three, and I have had the honor of calling Stillwater my home for over a decade. My husband and I have lived up on the hill, and in addition to living here, I've also been blessed to be able to work here professionally, but also as an engaged community member, currently volunteering on multiple steering committees in our community, as well as serving on the Board of Directors for Family Means. Professionally, I work for the University of Minnesota Foundation and have worked in the nonprofit sector for over 10 years. This means I'm a mission-driven individual, I'm community-driven, and engaged with our businesses and residents here in Stillwater. I look forward to answering the questions in the forum today. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Sherid Kellerman, also for Ward Two.
Thank you, Shannon, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. My family actually lives just up the hill here in a house that, like Stillwater, merges the modern with the historic. In the 14 years that I've lived in this community, I have made connections as a neighbor, as a volunteer, and as a Human Rights Commissioner. This is a special city. It captivates me and it motivates me to public service. In the 25 years of my professional life, I have worked on hundreds of client projects. Almost every time, I come in as an outsider, but I quickly gain people's trust and respect. It's because I'm constantly working to create value for them. I ask questions, I do my homework, I listen with empathy, and I make decisions based on facts and not emotion. So I'm going to put those same skills to work for you here in Stillwater if you vote for me for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for Ward Three, we have Ed Nelson.
Thank you, Mary. I love Stillwater. My wife Jackie, my daughter Sophia, and I consider ourselves very fortunate to get to live here. I love to walk down the Brown Creek Trail, I love to go down by the river, I love to cross the Liv Bridge, eat downtown, and the holidays. We just do it so well, and we feel very blessed that we get to do that, and we often say that it's like we're getting to live on vacation. So when the opportunity arose for me to be able to give back and to do something for the city, I jumped on it right away. But what happened is when I got there is I found that so many in our community, excuse me, are not represented. So many are not being heard. I got there and the HRC was really, unfortunately, more of tokenism and performatory, and the city, in its efforts to be premier, was leaving many voices behind. So I am running to bring a voice and representation for those vulnerable.
Thank you. Larry Oderbricht.
Hi, thank you. Thank you to the League for doing this. This is important work. I'm the incumbent running for office, a strategy consultant in my day job, got my bachelor's from UCF, I have an MBA from Hamlin University where I focused on conflict resolution. Just celebrated 25 years with my wife last Thursday. We have three kids, all ponies. My son was an Eagle Scout. He's over at the University of Minnesota, so say hi when you see him. Emma's also at college, and my daughter is captain of the Chevilles team. So pretty proud of the family. In addition to being a council member, I'm a planning commissioner. I started the Energy Action Commission, which is the first new committee in Stillwater in 30 years. I sit on the Valley Access Board of, and those guys are taping for us today, and I'm the city's nominee for the Browns Creek Watershed. Also a member of the city's IT team. I drove the effort to make Stillwater the first donate-life city, and I'm a board member in the League of Minnesota Cities where I advocate for Stillwater policies. Stillwater's doing great, and I'm here to support them. Thank you.
All right, let's turn to questions, and we'll rotate them, so just call your name when it's your turn to answer. For the first question, Ed Nelson will be the first, and the question is, what are the roles of Stillwater City Council?
What are the roles?
What are the roles of city council members?
For me, the role of city council members is to represent all the citizens that live here. It's to bring the best of what we can be, to reach our highest ideals, what we're capable of doing, but remembering to not leave anyone behind. For me, government should be a place that we can come together to discuss extraordinary ideas, concepts, and how we can have a betterment for not only the community and for our business and economic diversity, but also for the diversity of all of our citizens.
Thank you. And Larry Oderbricht.
Yeah, I love this job. This job is all about leading through vision, value, and actions. It's about upholding integrity, but there's a couple of things that, you know, I think we go deep on. First and foremost, financial oversight. One of our jobs is to keep taxes as low as possible, and I'm hoping you ask a couple of questions about our budget as we get through here. Effective policymaking, we rewrote our entire city code last year. I've got six or seven articles in the Gazette or on my website that you can read to kind of get a little bit more information in that. And then leadership beyond meetings. A lot of the work of this job is the meetings before the meetings and making sure that we're supporting staff and that our staff is able to get through it. Like I said, I love this job. It's a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to next term. Thank you.
Thank you. Now for Ward Two, we have Lindsey Belland.
Yes, so the role of council, I believe that the role of city council, really I will echo Larry and Ed, is sort of that commitment to community and bridging the gap between our business, residents, and local government, committed to sort of fostering this civic engagement that is, one, that encompasses all voices, where everybody who's walking through the door is heard, and we're really gauging the temperature of the needs, the wants, and the desires of our community, representing that up here on council, creating effective and actionable policy, making sure our community is safe, and working with commissions, nonprofits in the area, and community groups to sort of make sure this community thrives, grows, and continues to be the successful Stillwater we love.
Thank you. And Sherid Kellerman.
So I don't know if it's better to go first or last, because so many great things have been said here that I would have said as well, but I would echo in particular what I heard about city council being a position of service. We have a responsibility to serve all residents, all residents of Stillwater, and the businesses that are here. One of the ways that I think we can think of city council is not people who are going to come up with the solutions and come up with policies for the sake of policy, but to be able to listen to the constituents of our wards and of the entire city and understand where there are problems, but also where there are opportunities, and take those things that we hear and funnel them through to the people and the entities who can find those solutions and craft policies around those.
Thank you. Sherid Kellerman. All right, Lindsey. Did I ask both of you that first question?
You did.
Okay, now I will get back on track. Larry?
Yes.
Oderbricht. The same question.
You got all of us.
All right, so let's start over from question two. What skills and experiences do you have that would benefit the council's work? And we will begin with Sherid Kellerman.
Well, as I said in my opening statement, there have been countless times in the last 25 years where I walk into a room and I'm the person who knows nothing about a project. And the thing is that I listen. I listen, I assume that I know nothing at the beginning, and I listen carefully, but also with empathy, and I make sure that I'm gathering all the perspectives that are relevant to the issue at hand. So I would say that that's an important skill. It's important to have people feel like they're heard and to be able to analyze all the information that comes in and be able to make objective decisions. So that is a key thing that I think is a skill that I bring to the table from, again, two and a half decades of professional experience, and, you know, really making sure that all stakeholders have their perspectives be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsey Belland.
Great. Again, I'll echo Sherid, sort of some of the same things that I said in my opening statement. As a nonprofit professional, I work a lot in the philanthropic area, and a big part of that is having a strong skill set in sort of disseminating information and fully understanding the audience. So one of the biggest skills that I bring to council is really that connectedness to neighbors, to businesses, to sort of the messaging that's going out on the streets in our community, as well as the policy that's happening. I can work with anybody. I'm really strong at communicating, getting information out there, and sort of bridging that gap where there's this connectedness between local government and our residents.
Thank you. Larry Oderbricht.
So I love those two answers. The person who has the seat currently over there is really good at connecting with the neighbors out there, and I hope you guys continue that. My special skill that I'll highlight, when I started the Energy Action Commission, it was important to me that we got voices from the right and the left on that, and we think through that committee, we're going to be able to get about $450,000 of energy costs out. We have people that are literally running for a Republican seat right now. We have a lot of people on the left. Next term, I want to do the same thing for affordable housing. If we want to talk about making sure that this city has an opportunity to include everybody, that's one of the key ways to do that. And started to do that last year. Clearly, presidential year is not the right time to do that, but I think I'm going to be able to get a right and left group together to do that. Call them a purple team, so thank you.
And Ed Nelson.
Thank you, Mary. So I work for a basic human services nonprofit agency here in the San Coi Valley. I am a commissioner on the Human Rights Commission, and the way that intersects with my own personal life, growing up Latino, I think I have a very unique perspective on some of those citizens that I see daily at our organization that are not represented, the vulnerable that are here within the community, that unfortunately here at City Hall are not really part of the conversation. I have 40 years' experience of doing nonprofit and public sector work. I currently am an ambassador for the Chamber of Commerce. I am a certified DEI facilitator. I am on the DEI Task Force for United Way for Washington County East. So I bring a unique perspective, I think, of not only involvement within the community, but the years of experience that allow me to bring something to this council that I think it's not had before. Thank you.
Thank you. And for question three, we'll begin with Lindsey Belland. In November, Stillwater voters will be asked to support a half percent sales tax to pay for riverfront improvements. Do you support this ballot issue, why or why not?
So one of the things that makes Stillwater great is truly our riverfront and the green spaces that we have here. One of the unique things Stillwater has that other municipalities do not have is that every resident has a green space, particularly within walking distance. I've had conversations with council members, with Joe Coleman, our city administrator, around this proposed tax. I am a proponent of sort of continuing the work on our green spaces, particularly around Lumberjack Landing and the Bridgeview Park over there, and I do think that this is an opportunity for us to capture non-resident tax revenue to this fund. Additionally, with the grants that the city has already secured, as well as some of that additional funding, it sounds like residents may only have to pay about a quarter of the monies that would go towards something that would impact our future for the positive for all of us here.
Thank you. Sherid Kellerman.
I'm inclined to agree. I'm a proponent of the sales tax referendum, and I would urge people to vote yes. What we're talking about is adding 10 cents to every $20 that you spend in sales. You know, it's an excellent opportunity. I think that it will strengthen some of the already very strong, attractive green spaces that Stillwater has here. It's kind of a win-win, to be honest. Now, when we do the math, $6.2 million, which is what we're looking to raise here with the half percent sales tax, would require a $1.24 billion sales tax revenue base, sales revenue base, that is, which amounts to about $124 million a year over 10 years. So I would just want to make sure fiscally that that is where the city is at now in terms of sales revenue, and if it's not, how are we proposing to reach that so that we can, in fact, raise those $6.2 million? But absolutely, I'm in favor of the tax.
Thank you. Ed Nelson.
100%. I love this proposal. I really appreciate the city bringing this, and I appreciate all the partnerships that have been part of this. This is an extraordinary opportunity to be able to prioritize not only parks and open space, but with that you get the extra benefits of walkability, of watershed quality, which is an important issue that this particular park and the other parks will serve. I love that we are honoring not only the beautiful landscape that we have, the water quality, but our heritage, which is also going to be held in so much of what we're doing here. I will say, just to get it in there, I'm one of those that still am very disappointed at the idea of Lumberjack Landing. I'd still like to change the name to something else that's more historic and honors those who were here before, but I love this tax and I love the work that it can bring forward.
Thank you. Larry Oderbricht.
Yeah, this is a tricky one, because part of the local office sales tax statute is I'm not allowed to have an opinion. The city's role is to just educate on this. So I'm not going to give you my opinion on it. I will say, Sherid, the answer to your stuff is, there's a University of Minnesota study on the website for it that will answer a lot of the questions you have regarding it. It is going to be, according to that study, mostly funded by people who are visiting our city, which is fantastic that we were able to get that information. Agree with everything that's been said. One of the facts that I bring to the table is the Lumberjack Landing, city in the last term was able to receive a $1 million donation to put towards that. There's some archaeological site, to your point about this being a historic site. The state has taken an archaeological interest in it. It was a place where we did lumber work, but there's some history that predates that that goes back as well, is important as well. So thank you.
All right, all the candidates have answered, and Sherid Kellerman has requested a rebuttal, so you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Not so much a point of rebuttal, but first of all, thank you, Councilmember Oderbricht, for the clarification, and I will certainly check out the U of M Extension website. I was aware of this study, and I guess my question is, if you're able to answer it here or perhaps at a later point, you know, the 46% of sales tax that is actually brought in by visitors, my understanding is that is currently already happening, it's not additional to what we're getting today. So the question still remains, even if 46% is paid by visitors, are we looking at a sufficient sales base to pay for the $6.2 million or raise the $6.2 million?
Thank you. Anything further? You could answer on your own time if you prefer.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to question number four, and the first to answer will be Lindsey Belland. And the question is, how do you plan to engage with and represent all members of Stillwater's diverse community, including young people and those who have not traditionally been involved in the work and life of the city?
So to sort of answer that question backwards, I'll start by saying I am myself considered a young professional and a young person. I had the honor of working with the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce to launch HYPE, which is harnessing young professional energy. I think I bring a unique perspective as an individual under 40 sitting on council. The way that I would plan to represent, again, sort of goes back to that skill set of understanding the audience. I think sometimes, and what I've been hearing out in the community, is that there is a sort of potential misunderstanding or inability to access the information. While Stillwater does a great job of getting information out there, most everyday residents and business owners still is not quite understanding how to access it. So I think one of the things that I would like to do is sort of assess our audience, assess any barriers that might be in place of accessing information, and just making sure that our residents, our businesses are feeling connected to Stillwater, and Stillwater is disseminating that information in a way that's accessible and easy to understand.
Thank you. Sherid Kellerman.
I totally agree on that last point in particular. We need to make sure that people understand the things that are happening in the city, they understand why they're happening and how it will affect their lives. I'm really interested in bringing more of the people who tend to be the quieter people, the unseen, sometimes I would go so far as to say marginalized. One of the great experiences I've had as a Human Rights Commissioner is, two years ago, we gave the Human Rights Award to a group at the Stillwater High School, and just, it's so motivating to see what young people can do. I want to see them play a greater role and have a greater voice here in the city. You know, personally, I have a son who is transgender, I have a daughter who is neurodiverse. I'm keenly aware of how easily these kinds of people can be marginalized, and I'm not even talking about other members of the very, very diverse community that we have here. They all do need to be heard, and they need to be heard where they live and where they are. We can't ask them to come to city council meetings. We need to meet them where they are. That's very important to me.
Thank you. Ed Nelson.
Accessibility, engagement, and listening. I think that part of the ability to do this job well is, first of all, to listen, but you can't listen if you're not engaging with the community, if you're not involved with them. Part of that is literally being involved in as many aspects of the community and being there and being a presence as you go about. Because of all the various involvements that I already have and the, I love our community and I love being part of that, allows the opportunities to introduce myself to people I may not know, to be able to listen to those voices. Obviously, some of the voices I keep talking about, unfortunately, I see on a daily basis in my day job as are the people that come in that may need that extra help, that are vulnerable. So I think it's being there, listening, being involved with our community, and then taking action when you come back to this table.
Thank you. Larry Oderbricht.
So I make three points. One, you know, I think about my Uncle Doug Locker, who a lot of folks know. He had a transplant a while ago and had trouble even getting into a meeting like this because of stairs and stuff like that. It's important that we go through and think about our handicap access. It's one of the reasons why I'm hoping that after we finish rewriting our zoning code this year, next year, my planning commission takes up handicap accessibility. In addition to that, communication is incredibly important. It's one of the reasons why I keep trying to crank out articles, why our mayor does such a fantastic job on social media, working through with stuff. We started to work with a communication firm last year. We are hiring for a new communication person this year to help us. Incredibly important to get that stuff out in the city.
Thank you. And for the next question, Larry Oderbricht, you'll begin. What would be your approach to residents' concerns about parking and congestion downtown?
Yeah, so that's been a very hot topic since we came up with our new stuff with that. When I joined council, the one piece of our budget that was upside down was the parking budget. It was not paying for itself. So I like to point out to our residents that you were paying for parking before, it was just coming out of tax dollars. 60% of our parking is still free. We have some pretty good evidence, some of it just cited by Sherid, actually, that a lot of that parking is paid for by people that aren't coming to our city, which is great for us. Parking is now self-funded, and we're putting a little bit of money away inside of there for another parking garage as well. We're going for a long-term strategic play with parking and really create some additional stuff. The other thing I would add to it is, the parking policy used to be what I have called psychotic. The parking we didn't want people to use, we charged for, and the parking we didn't want people to use was free, and the parking that we did want people to use, we were charging for. So crazy. We fixed that as well, and it's very nimble now.
Thank you. Ed Nelson.
I appreciate the opportunity for this question. One of the things, while I appreciate some aspects of the new parking policy, this is one of those that I think is a real equity issue. I actually don't like the way we've set up the structure of our parking. When I think of the Ward Three people that, sorry, the Ward Three people that even, they're coming down here, they're not necessarily part of the downtown. When I think of some of the community residents that I see on a daily basis, to even spend half an afternoon down at Lowell Park, for instance, is a real challenge for them to even spend $4 or $5. To me, I'd love to see more of a policy where our residents, because we're already paying for it in taxes, are able to go down there free, and I know we have the technology to be able to do that, and we go ahead and charge the tourists that come visit our community. But I would like to see a restructure of our entire parking, and even though I'm running out of time, I also believe that we could reset up our downtown area to have, one, more walkability, and, two, thank you.
You can finish your sentence.
It's not a stop. Just, I would love to see a restructure, and as Councilman Oderbricht mentioned about the zoning, I think it's a great time to be able to look at areas like what we did with Chestnut Plaza and do more like that.
Thank you. Lindsey Belland.
Yes, so I will echo, actually, a little bit of what both Ed and Larry have said. It's my understanding that we were upside down with the current, or the old parking structure, and that we've sort of fiscally taken a look at that and with the new paid parking have addressed some of that. However, I will also, or I will also add that this is an opportunity for us to look at things like transportation, public transportation specifically for those with barriers, as Ed has mentioned, to getting to the downtown area, and even just the residents. I mean, I live in Ward Two, which is close to the downtown area, and even I myself am having to walk down there versus try to find parking. Another sort of aspect of this, again, sort of working on the event side of things, is really looking at our partners who are hosting these large events in our downtown area, which is causing additional congestion. So working hand in glove with those entities to sort of understand a full communication about transportation, alternate routes into town, available parking outside of the downtown district.
Thank you. And Sherid Kellerman.
Yeah, all three of these people are talking perfect sense, and the solution is a hybrid of all of them. We absolutely should be charging for downtown parking, but we also should absolutely be accommodating the people who, you know, live here but also need to drive their cars to get downtown to either, you know, do their groceries or just visit, or they work downtown. You know, Dave Junker's mom lives across the street from me, and I see her get in her little red car, and she tells me she goes downtown every day, and she walks out on the lift bridge, and that lady should not have to walk downtown, and she should not have to pay to be downtown. But there are a lot of creative solutions that are fiscally responsible. I dare say that we could probably charge even more for parking for the premium spots, as Larry said. You know, these things are not a common good, they should be worth something, and that money comes back to the city and gets used in really interesting ways. I know I'm running out of time, but I would also like to stretch this conversation to talk about a lot of the empty or occasionally empty parking lots, and how could we use those, for instance, to shuttle people in for things like events and weekends.
Thank you. And I have a rebuttal request from Larry.
Not a rebuttal, just clarification. Love a lot of the ideas. We have started working on those, I forgot to mention. We are working on getting seniors free passes. As our technology gets better at it, we're going to be able to do the citizen thing. The Parking Commission is led by Dave Junker, that's going to be open next That's going to be open next seat, so you guys can work on that stuff. And the premium spots, we do charge for. We can charge $10, $20 for events and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then going to the next question, Lindsay Belland will begin, and the question is, where do you see people struggling in the community? As a city council member, what would you do to address those struggles?
Well, that's a loaded question, but I appreciate being asked that. So I think that we have a couple opportunities here. Again, some of the conversations I've had with residents specifically in this ward is this idea of things being sort of clear as mud. I just heard our mayor say that in a council meeting on Tuesday. So this idea that there is, again, sort of this gap between the information that the city is putting out there, the policy, like Sherid had mentioned earlier, why things are happening the way that they're happening, and disseminating that information out in a way that feels accessible to the residents and business owners. So I think there's sort of this opportunity and struggle of our community feeling connected and engaged with its local government.
Thank you. Sherid Kellerman.
Yeah, I think that there's a couple of struggles that I certainly hear of time and again when I'm out there canvassing in Ward Two, and frankly, in other words, you know, when I meet people who live in other parts of Stillwater, I think that the traffic calming is a huge struggle. People are worried about traffic safety. People are worried about city streets that are being treated as roads, and people are traveling at high speeds. They're basically getting from point A to point B and not seeing the street as a place of residence. So that's a struggle. Childcare, childcare affordability is a huge struggle, and it's one that the Human Rights Commission has been working on. We're going to actually be presenting the results of a survey at our meeting next Monday. Everyone is welcome to come, 7 o'clock. And, you know, from those 62 respondents that have answered that survey, it's huge. It affects people's quality of life. It affects the decisions that they make, the trade-offs that they shouldn't have to make, and believe it or not, there are things that we can do at the city level, working with county and state, to help address childcare affordability. I haven't even touched on housing affordability because I'm out of time.
Thank you. Ed Nelson.
Well, as I mentioned before, I see a lot of the vulnerable that we have within our community every day. It's part of what prompted me to run. We have so many issues here that when we talk about being a premier community, we're still forgetting to look at, we have housing issues. And as we are going into the zoning redraw, I think there's opportunities there for us to be able to look at, how can we possibly change some of that structure right now to maybe open the door for more affordable housing? We have transportation issues. I love the model that Family Means has with their loop system that they do, but we could enhance that so much more to get people, you know, to downtown, to the, through the medical doctors, to the supermarket. These are critical issues that we need to be holding all of our citizens for that I see on a daily basis and just want to make that difference for them in their daily life and make it premier for them as well.
Thank you. You've all answered that question?
No. Still gotta go.
Needed to ask.
So love some of the ideas. I wasn't sure exactly how I'd answer this because a lot of what we're doing is really well. Agreed, the community connector loop is something that the city supports and is really important. As we're thinking about transportation, it's a regional issue. The county has a quarter cent tax on there. It generates about $10 million of available tax dollars. That's something the city of Stillwater can't afford, and it is a regional issue. As we're looking at that, there's two studies that are top of mind for me. Met Council has Network Now Project. There's a great website for it. It's going to give us a strategic view of the area, and the county is also running one. Commissioner Creasol, who endorsed me, by the way, had talked me through, and if you talk to the Public Works Director over there, there's a lot of good information coming out of that that's going to give us the strategy we need to handle transportation and move beyond the connector loop.
Thank you. And we'll move to the next question, and the first to answer will be Ed Nelson. And the question is, what do you believe the city council should do to ensure businesses thrive?
Well, that's a great question, Mary. I appreciate that. I think there's so much room for synergy and creating opportunity where not only can we raise even community involvement here, but that we could have things that help the city grow. One of those things is, I would love to see something, I'm involved in several art organizations here. I am the Chair of the Board for the St. Quay Valley Opera. I sit with Union Art Alley along with Lindsay. And I think there's a real place to raise the arts here, for instance, that we could have even at a commission level, which is one of the things I'd like to bring forward, and get all the different art organizations together, the community organizations, like our Summer Tuesdays that we do, and support that effort, because there's a national study that just came out that shows when you support the arts that there's a residual, I think the number's $36, that is brought in per person into a community when there's art events that are happening.
Thank you. Larry Odebrecht.
Yeah, the truth is Stillwater has, we're the envy of the state. I hear this at the League of Minnesota Cities all the time. We have a thriving downtown. We have a beautiful waterfront. We're historic. One of the things that I'm most proud of that we did last year is we created a Downtown Services District. The downtown building owners, on their own, decided to pull together and create a fund and a committee to beautify and continue to improve downtown. That never happens in the state. That never happens. I got to brag on that at the League of Minnesota Cities, and that's how the downtown street cleaning is happening right now. So the truth is, when we're thinking about economic development in the city, I think we need to continue doing Harvest Fest, Lumberjack Days. The snow sculpting championship has really opened up downtown in the winter, but I think we're on the right track and we need to keep going that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherid Kellerman.
Yeah, I mean, what a great place to live as far as being a thriving community. I think that there are a couple of ways that the city can help the business community thrive. I think one of those is actually coming out of the Energy Action Plan. I think if we can help businesses understand how they can save money while also reducing greenhouse gas emissions, that is money that they can put back into their businesses and grow those businesses. I also think that there's other initiatives that the city can present, ideally in coalition with the businesses, that would include things like patio dining. Well, if there's one great silver lining that happened in the pandemic, it was that we could all eat out on the street. And quite honestly, if we start to think, for instance, about the parking issue in a different way, you can bring things like patio dining back, and boy, does that attract visitors? And it attracts people right here, you know, in Stillwater to come and visit businesses and spend their money. So there's a lot of interesting things we can do. Ed touched on the arts. There's so much we can do with the arts. So there's a lot we can do.
Thank you. Lindsay Belland.
Yes, so certainly, like everyone here has said, we have a thriving business community. When I think about the ways council can support businesses, I think about it sort of threefold, which is to think about the safety of our community, to think about working in coalition with organizations like Open to Business, the Downtown Steering Committee, and community members at large. And then I also just think about our green spaces, right? Thinking about keeping it a safe, clean space where businesses want to come, where employees feel like they can come here as well. And part of that also kind of goes back to the transportation. So when we think about retaining employees and welcoming new businesses into our community, I think we have an opportunity in economic development to really assess our transportation capabilities and needs here within our community and support that as a council.
Thank you. And everyone has answered that one now. Okay. Let me keep me on track. Okay, the next question, we'll go first to Larry Odebrecht. And the question is, what proposals do you have to create sufficient affordable housing options in the city?
Yeah, I kind of already covered that one a little bit. We've got a really passionate church community around affordability. I did support the moratorium downtown when we were looking at putting emergency housing in the motels. That resulted in us being able to put emergency housing into the government center, literally feet away from services like the sheriff's office and other things in there. I think it's a fantastic solution for that problem. I have a loved one who struggles with this a lot, essentially my little brother. And I keep saying over and over again, I wish to God he lived in Washington County because we have so much here. Mental health is a big part of this as well, and we've got some great partnerships with the county on that. One of the parts of this job is you have to be able to work with everybody in the city to make these things happen, and that's a critical part of this role. Thanks.
Thank you. Ed Nelson.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, again, the organization that I work for by day sees a lot of these people coming in. Thank goodness to a lot of the work that the state did last year. There's dollars that we're able to help those who are facing potential homelessness. We have a homelessness prevention program. I love, also echo what the county has done, really pushing forward in the work by so many to make sure we have this homeless shelter that's going to be built. But I think, as I mentioned earlier, that we have a wonderful opportunity, for instance, as we're about to relook at the zoning maps, because I think the zoning maps opens up opportunities for us to be able to look at what kind of density do we have? Where do we have affordable housing requirements? I think there's also the ability to bring in where maybe we can have special incentive for first-time home buyers, and some of these programs that are out there within the state and the county that I think we could utilize.
Thank you. Lindsay Belland.
Yes. So when thinking about affordable housing, certainly I think that this is a great issue for council to sort of take action in. I had the opportunity to look over the 2024 strategic planning that the city recently did, and I did notice that there was a call for a comprehensive study of affordable housing within our community. I do think sort of the side pieces that go with that, as we look at zoning and we look at density and what we have available to us here, again, this is the third time I think I've said this, hand in hand with that sort of comes this transportation infrastructure as well. So making sure that we're fully understanding the need, we're fully understanding sort of the zoning opportunities that we have in front of council, but also to ensure that we have the infrastructure to really address this issue in a sustainable way, not just in a quick and easy, fast, deliverable way.
Thank you. Siri Kellerman.
Yeah, all of these things make sense, and we do have an affordable housing issue here in Stillwater. You know, understandably, the missing middle housing legislation died in the Minnesota Legislature. It was an overreach. It left cities out of the conversation. So cities absolutely, however, need to take this as a wake-up call, as if they didn't need one already, that we need to think about how to responsibly densify our housing. Now, we will sometimes get the most interesting ideas from the people in our community. I had breakfast with about a dozen ladies in Ward Two and Ward Three last week. One idea they came up with is, hey, there's a lot of larger houses, especially in Wards One and Two, I would say, where there is an older member living in that house, they don't want to move out, but there is room in that house for renters, at least maybe a family or a renter. And it's a win-win situation because the older resident gets the rented income, the younger resident gets affordable rent, they can provide perhaps even lawn care or, you know, shoveling the sidewalk. They get to live where they work. There are creative solutions we can come up with here.
Thank you. And everyone has answered, and Larry Odebrecht has requested.
Yeah, just a clarification, again, not a rebuttal. Loved a couple of things you said. One clarification, not a homeless shelter, it's emergency housing. There's an important difference between the two of them. Lindsay, you're 100% right. We're behind on the comp plan and what we were supposed to be doing in that, which is why we got to tackle that next year. And then Sherid, I love your comment about the middle housing thing. Daniel Lightfoot over at the League of Minnesota Cities and I worked really hard to make sure that cities retain a lot of our powers and that we are able to do this. Stillwater does an exceptional job of being thoughtful in zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to our next question. Siri Kellerman will begin, and the question is, what is the city council's role in ensuring safe drinking water for its residents?
There's a couple of roles we need to play. Obviously, number one, the water needs to be clean. Now that we know that there is a PFAS contamination in the water, we need to work expediently while still remaining fiscally responsible to find solutions to the problem. I understand that that is a work in progress, and a lot of the people who are doing this, this is not an easy job. And frankly, and unfortunately, this is not specific to Stillwater or even to the region. This is a nationwide problem. And so I think city council needs to guide that work, and they need to make sure that it happens as quickly as possible. At the same time, the other component of this whole issue is one of communication and transparency. And I, for one, have gone on the record to say that the communication was not sufficient. It was not sufficiently fast enough, and I think that city council took a hit in terms of its trustworthiness and credibility when it did not immediately report the results, even just to say, hey, there's a problem, and we're working on it. Work with us.
Thank you. Lindsay Belland.
Yes, I will echo Sherid. So I believe that city council's role is critical in ensuring that our community has safe drinking water. Certainly, we know that two of our wells are contaminated here, and like Sherid had mentioned, there seems to be sort of this fallout of a, you know, communication that didn't come out in a timely manner perceived by the community in that way. My understanding is that the city is working hard. We have exhausted every single fiscal mechanism to ensure that we can address safe drinking water in future for Stillwater. And in terms of the communication, I actually just heard as well that our mayor is working hand in hand with our governor and VP candidate Walls to really flush out a better sort of guidance from the state in terms of communicating out with their cities. It sounds like Stillwater sort of relied on the state for guidance in that communication, and correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, but we are actually now sort of taking these active steps to make sure that this doesn't happen again in this community, but also in other communities around the state.
Thank you. Larry Odebrecht.
Yeah, regarding the communication, we were absolutely guided by the Minnesota Department of Health to not report, and you're exactly correct. Our mayor's done a great job of leading that. I'm leading the effort in the League of Minnesota Cities to get some better guidance in the legislature. More importantly, this is the most expensive thing we are going to face in the next 10 years. We have been able to find opportunities. We were first told roughly $10 million per well. We have 10 wells on this. Working with other engineering firms and across the state, we've been able to bend that cost curve down. We think it may be able to be a third of that cost. Those numbers are still forming, and the city administrator is going to yell at me for saying that. But this is easily the most critical thing we have, and I'm super proud of our communication work after the fact, because getting this right across the state is critical.
Thank you. Ed Nelson.
Well, I want to echo a lot of what I've heard up here. I mean, I am one of those that really was upset by the lack of transparency around this. I've heard about the shutting down the wells right away, the minute we heard, but I still think there could have been a level of, hey, we don't have enough data, we don't have enough information, but you all still have a right to know what we know. I also sat in this room, to me, this is a real equity issue, because I sat in this room and heard out of the many proposals how to deal with this, that maybe each homeowner goes gets a water filtration system. I guarantee you that there's those residents that I see that cannot afford to go put a water filtration system in. Since then, what I'd like to see is there's a model for what Woodbury is doing about bringing in a central water filtration system that is equitable, that allows for all the citizens to have it. We're going to have to step up and pay for that, but we have to ensure that we have clean drinking water for everyone.
Thank you. And Lindsay Belland has requested more time, so 30 seconds.
Again, not a rebuttal, just sort of a continuation and clarification. I just want to also add that I know Woodbury is doing a lot. It's also my understanding that there's a lot in the way, things are moving fast and furious when we talk about mitigation strategies, and so it'd be critical for the city of Stillwater to sort of stay on top of these processes and make sure that we are engaging in sort of the right mitigation process for this community. In terms of the communication, I also understand that the city of Stillwater was really ready for kind of a slew of questions and comments to come in, and it sounded like they kind of only received a few, which to me, again, begs the question, is the city doing enough to get the communication out there in a way that's accessible?
Thank you. And Ed Nelson is also.
No, sorry.
Oh, Larry.
Yeah, just, again, clarifications. The home filters, the way the statute works, that's not a solution that would work. We could give a home filter to every human out there and ensure the PFAS are not coming in, and it does not answer the legislative requirement on that. The centralized line doesn't work. Our 10 wells are distributed across the city, so there's not really a way to centralize it. And you're right, we got about tenfold the number of calls about the yard waste container than we did the PFAS, despite articles in the Gazette, the newsletter, everything we could do. Thank you.
And this, I think, will have to be our final question, and it will go to Lindsay Belland. If ranked choice voting becomes available, would you support it for Stillwater municipal elections? Why or why not?
I'm not sure actually where I stand on that at all. I need to find some more information out on that. Thank you.
Siri?
I support it. I support it. I have been a supporter of ranked choice voting. I have lobbied on behalf of ranked choice voting at the state level. I was disappointed that it did not pass in the last session, and I would support it at the municipal level as well. It is something that has been adopted by other cities in Minnesota and across the country. It's the direction of the future.
Thank you. Ed Nelson?
I also support it. And again, I think this is one of those that is almost an equity issue in itself. I think it more addresses a voice and a listening for more of our constituents, and so I definitely support that.
Thank you. Larry Odebrecht?
You know, that's something our elections, we've recently moved out to our county partners. We were running the elections ourselves. It's an interesting proposal. I think in a time when elections have come under fire from people adding a layer of complexity to it, strikes me as challenging. Certainly mathematically, it works well. I just wonder if it doesn't add an opportunity for people to kind of poke at elections and create more challenges there.
Thank you. Everyone's answered, and Siri has requested extra time.
Yeah, just to, again, address Larry's point. Yeah, ranked choice voting, absolutely, it's like anything that is new and unknown. It's going to come with fears and concerns. And it's absolutely appropriate to ask, are we actually adding a layer of complexity here? That is not something we wanted to in Stillwater or any other city. But again, we have a lot of role model cities who have implemented this. We need to form relationships with them and figure out what best practices are. This is absolutely possible, and it's happening elsewhere.
Thank you. And that is the end of questioning. We'll turn to closing statements, and that will begin with?
Mary, can we let her in? I'm sorry. There's somebody locked out of the room. Can I just let them in real quick?
Oh.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, sir. So we'll go in reverse order of the opening statements. And so that Larry will begin the beginning. Larry Odebrecht will begin the closing round.
Sure. I love this job. It's a lot of fun to help people, whether it's, you know, something about pools or something quite a bit larger. We've seen everything here, everything from chicken coops to on the small side, to our Level Three sex offender policy that we changed this last year. I'm proud of the fact that I can find my yard signs next to Marx and Bethany's who are, you know, opposing each other for county commission. You can find them next to Jessica's or Josiah's. I work with all of those people. Worked well with Karen on this. This is a role that you have to be nonpartisan in. And that's probably the reason the county commissioner endorsed me for this role. I love doing this, and I'm looking forward to doing it again. Stillwater is a great city. We've got a great thing going for us, and I just want to keep us on the same track. Thanks.
Thank you. Ed Nelson?
"We all do better when we all do better." Paul Wellstone. It's really the crux of why I am running. I sat in a half-day workshop with the city council and all the heads of the various departments here. And they were engendering, talking about words that would hold the meaning of what they saw the city to be five and 10 years from now. And while we are premier and we want to be a premier community, which was the top word, I believe, that came out of that day, after sitting there for four and a half hours and listening, there was never any talk of inclusiveness. There was never any talk of equity, even what about by and for the citizens and the people? And that was the day I decided to run, is when I realized that it's not in the culture. It's not, they're not using the proverbial lens to look at every citizen that's here. And I think that's a big hole that we're missing, and it's why I decided to run.
Thank you. Sherid Kellerman?
Even as we celebrate Stillwater's vibrant community that all of us here love, we cannot ignore modern problems like social inequity, the effects of climate change, threats to our natural resources. These are not just national issues. These are things we have to deal with right here in Stillwater. But the good news is, is that cities have an amazing track record of coming up with innovative solutions to these problems. And I think it's because, as Charles Marone of Strong Towns puts it, "Local government is not the lowest level of government. It is the highest level of collaboration for strong citizens working to build a prosperous place." Stillwater can absolutely tackle these challenges and any others that come this way while ensuring that its community thrives, thanks to its remarkable combination of dedicated public servants, engaged residents, and passionate business leaders. And it would be an honor to work with all of you to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay Bellin?
So I entered this campaign from a place of service, and that's how I will end this forum as well. Coming from a place of gratitude and deep commitment to the service of Stillwater's businesses, residents, and community at large. I have a vision for Stillwater where every voice is heard, every person has access to the information, and we have innovative ideas that are embraced, that we're working together to build a strong community. This is important to run nonpartisan, and I will pride myself on running a nonpartisan campaign for city council. I'm driven by passion for service, and I am ready to tackle any challenges ahead with courage and integrity. I thank you for your support.
Thank you. And that concludes our forum for city council members of Stillwater Wards Two and Wards Three. Our website, LWV-WBLA, has listings for all of our future candidate forums and links where you can suggest questions for them. You can view the recording of this forum on our YouTube channel, "League of Women Voters White Bear Lake Area." And you can also look for it on Channel 16 here on Valley Access Television. Thank you, and remember to vote. Early voting started, will start September 20th, go to November 4th, and Election Day is November 5th. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.